Called order the city council work session for CDB's Grand Forks for Tuesday, May 12th. It is now five o'clock. City clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel?
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vetter?
Here.
Dale Helms?
Sorry, here.
Okay. Uh, Tim Riepel?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Mark Demers?
President.
This is Turner McCormick. Number one, outdoor dining and designated parking. Mr. Gordy, and we also have Rebecca Driscoll on with us to discuss this. So, Mr. Gordy, if you want to go through what is proposed, and we can have a discussion on that. And if Mr. Driscoll wants to add anything, by all means, feel free to.
Thank you.
I was called a couple of weeks ago by Ms. Driscoll. She, her daughter and her son-in-law are the new proprietors of Mama Maria's. And they were looking, and they've been doing some thinking about social distancing and reopening. And so they have, were thinking about, can they do some outdoor dining? And they know that over in Grand Forks, that they're, that they're looking at doing some outdoor dining as well. And so they looked at it, and they talked with the owners of the mall. And they've come up with a proposal to create an outdoor dining location on property that's actually owned by the mall, and parking space is owned by the mall, on the north side of the mall. And when they-
Mr. Gordy, can you hang on a second? Mr. Gordy, can you hang on a second? Can we mute Mr. Johnson, please? Or mute, Johnson, can you mute your phone?
Yeah, I can't mute it.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
That's okay. When, when they brought in the proposal, the spaces they're planning to use are the spaces they were using for pickup right now. They are looking to, so they will have to relocate those spaces. Their original proposal shows, they asked for two spaces on the street, on the west side of the building. I talked with them yesterday about the possibility of putting them on spaces that are owned by the mall behind the building. And I talked about, talked to Penny Stay today, who's the new owner of the mall. With regard to that possibility, she said that she has to look to see whether they can do it, or whether these spaces are all taken up for handicap, but she will get back to us on that. And at this point, if, if Ms. Driscoll has some things to add, I think that would be good, okay?
Yes. Thank you, Paul. You know, I grew up in, in East Grand Forks. My family's farmed there since the 1870s. And I'm really excited to be active again in the town and helping my granddaughter be a successful businesswoman. So, we are really excited about the possibility of being able to open Mama Maria's to outdoor dining. Obviously, as we listen to Governor Walz and the concerns with COVID-19, and we see what's happening actually even in, in Grand Forks. Some restaurants are opening, but people are still feeling very nervous. And I believe the future for the next several months will be the only way to keep food and beverage establishments alive is to have safe, comfortable, outdoor dining space. So, my granddaughter is actually, her first job was at Mama Maria's. And when the previous owner closed it a year ago, January, she stepped in and reopened it last June. And we all know what's happened since then with the construction on Demers Avenue and COVID-19 and a lot of interesting things. So, it's, it's a struggle right now, but we're very committed to the restaurant and to the city, but feel very strongly that the only way that she can, you know, stay alive is if we are able to do this outdoor space. So, Paul, I assume you've shared the diagrams with the mayor and council?
I shared the diagrams that you gave me up through Friday. You sent me the other one today that shows how you can comply. I did not share that one.
Okay, okay. Well, we had a preliminary drawing done that, that you've seen that shows the dimensions, 25 feet by 16 feet. And over the weekend, Kristen and I did some work on layouts of tables and seats. So, we feel that we could safely accommodate 27 diners on that space. The challenge, of course, will be, since this is a temporary, kind of a pilot program, the space that we build for it needs to be quite portable. That, I've been working with Nancy on the permitting process and issues for code and safety. So, you'll see, that's just kind of a basic diagram there. And we gave Paul more detail on the seating and how it would be each, you know, six feet apart. What we're hoping to do is create a fun little Italian bistro in that space. So, we, you know, we're, we're looking at purchasing chairs. We need outdoor chairs. But we do have tables we can use. Obviously, we'll be removing tables from the restaurant to conform with the fewer seating and the greater distance. So, we're very excited about having a, an attractive, welcoming space that can help Mama Maria's stay alive, and I, and I hope help the city by keeping our visitors coming and spending dollars in the city.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions at this time for Mr. Gordy or Ms. Driscoll at all? One thing that I have is, you know, we talked about this, and we've come in the past where we've had these pickup, and temporary pickup spots for restaurants in town, you know, on Demers there. And along the road there where we had some reserved parking and, in the parking lot on the other side also. I know we've had some discussions on that in the past, and we've had some, you know, back and forth, maybe some issues. And my question is, whoever can answer this, Mr. Gordy, Ms. Ellis, or whoever, anybody about that designated parking on those spots on the street as for pickup? Is this going to be actually temporary, or is this going to be from now going forward? Are you going to move back the pickup ones back to the, right behind the mall? We call it C-Palm Mall, but the movie theater, excuse me. Is that going to revert back to us when we can go back to normal seating? Is this something that you look to do going forward and have every year? I guess is the question. And I'm assuming those answers, you don't know it because you don't know if it's successful, maybe it will go on.
Well, it, you know, this is built on the model of the Downtown Development Association, the DDA Parklets. They've got a couple that, of course, that they're doing in East Grand Forks right now. Kristen would like to be able to have ongoing outdoor dining space. But again, something that's disassembled and stored for six months of the year, and then brought out during the fair weather. So, we, we are, right now, you know, Kristen works just about every single day. They're closed Sundays, but she's answering the phone, she's cooking the food, she's preparing the takeout. Now that she actually was awarded an SBA PPP loan. So, she's working on bringing some help back to keep the takeout going. But that's really been her lifeblood right now, is, is her takeout business. So, we need to be able to continue that, even if we do have seating outside. I think the takeout is still going to be a big part of people's lives as we continue with uncertainty. And going forward, you know, the summer of 2021 or summer of 2022, we, we do hope to have a fun, attractive, welcoming outdoor space there to be able to use each year. I know in talking with Nancy, being able to do this as a trial this year through the DDA kind of concept that they've already tested and has been successful. Nancy's opinion is, is if you, as our elected officials, like how it works, that she, that then we could spend fall and winter going through and doing ordinance updates and whatever needs to be done to do it on a more permanent basis.
I know somebody mentioned they want to speak. I'm not sure who it is, so who's?
This is Blue from the Downtown Development Association. Just to kind of reiterate that point of what we've done in Grand Forks is branded as a pilot. And so that way, we were able to learn from the two years. And we were actually due to end the pilot and put it fully into ordinance this year. But due to COVID, we have extended the pilot for one more year. But we've had great success with these pilot ideas of kind of trial it out, see what works, see what doesn't. So, that way, once we actually do get more into the legality side of it and putting it into actual code, that's where we're able to figure out what works, what doesn't work. And having Mama Maria's jumping at this idea so much makes it, I think, a really good eligibility for that pilot, at least for one summer.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I'm not even questioning the word position where the seating will be. I think more the question in the worry is having the pickup, delivery pickups on that street when there's, we've had some issues over the last couple of years with us designating spots for people to be able to have pickup spots and delivery. We, me as a personally, don't have an issue with it. But we have other businesses downtown that we need to look at and be considerate of that. And we have other businesses that sometimes have made comments they don't want it. So, that's why I'm bringing it up, just to make sure we have that discussion of, are we talking? Maybe have we spoke to these other businesses downtown on that street to see if they're fine with it? I know we've asked the same question every time this comes up. Have we talked to everybody? So, I guess that is where I'm coming from. I think it's a great idea to try this. And especially that back row behind the movie theater is owned by, you know, the movie theaters. So, that's, you know, between you guys doing that there. And maybe I, you know, haven't looked back there to see where that handicap parking is, but, you know, that might have to be an option. I don't know. But I don't have a problem with it personally. But we have to be cognizant of all the other businesses in that area. Mayor, you have something, sir?
Yeah, I have the same thought, Mark. You know, thinking long-term, if it's a successful venture in that location to have the outdoor seating, that's a perfect spot for it. To the curbside in the yellow parallelogram there on the west side of the theater building. If that had to go for this summer with this weird COVID thing wrapping up, I'd be receptive to it. But then in the long-term, the seating would be great long-term. But eventually, we'll probably have to move away from the curbside in that location. Again, just in fairness to all the businesses in the area. I had the same thought that you did.
Just a question on that. Has there ever been conversations? And as it's already been stated, it would need to be conversations, everybody. But instead of it being exclusive Mama Maria's takeout ordering, just because this might become a new vital piece for a lot of these small businesses? Has there ever been talks about just turning those into takeout spots for all of the businesses along Restaurant Row? And instead of it just being the two for Mama Maria's, maybe opening it up so Boardwalk has some takeout spots? And maybe Mike's Pizza, stuff like that as well?
No, that hasn't been brought up to anybody that I'm aware of unless anybody else has had that discussion. It's a good point, good idea.
And I can, I can reach out to some of those places too and kind of check to see how they would feel about that, at least in the long-term. Because I think this year is such a strange year for all of us.
Any other council members have any questions at this time?
Mr. President?
Mr. President? This is Dale.
Yes, Dale.
I think it's a great idea also. The only concern, or the only thing I would, and I'm sure they've already got that taken care of, is that we don't get too far out into that driveway behind the theater there so that, you know, nobody gets hurt. I'm sure you've already looked into that, or probably talking about putting a fence up there, I suppose, right? For your seat, outdoor seating?
Yes, the, the outdoor seating would be fenced. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't, the distance between the curb on the theater side and, you know, the, the length of the parking stall itself, that distance is 16 feet. So, we've measured that we'd stay within that 16-foot perimeter. And then the longer distance is the distance that is parallel to the mall going towards that green door that's used for Mama Maria's. Were you able to share the pictures, Paul, of the space as it looks right now?
The packet that I put together originally contains the picture. It shows where it's going to be located.
Page three- On page three has a design where it shows the fencing, Mr. Helms.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I kind of showed that. I'm, I'm with that, and I just wanted to make sure that they stay, you know, so that nobody gets hurt back there is all I'm concerned about. And I think it's a great idea. But did we not, correct me if I'm wrong, but did we not tell some other businesses that we would not specify some, some pickup, delivery or pickup spots on the street? Because that, we figured the traffic wasn't going to be that heavy down there anyway, where that would be an issue? Did we, or am I thinking?
Mr. Helms, as I said earlier in my statement here, that we, we did temporary. We didn't designate anything, so that's why-
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, just, just double checking. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gallstead, you had something, sir?
Yeah, we've gone through this once before, and I'll put together a memo again for you. But I believe Mr. Demers, at one time, we discussed this at his request, designating public street parking can be an issue. And that's why I believe, that's why I mentioned to Paul, since that door for Mama Maria's on the north side of the building could potentially continue to be used for delivery. You get away from all of that, all of those issues which are on-street public parking.
Thank you, sir.
Blue, I actually, I've got a question here. With the parklets in Grand Forks, weren't they built on public parking area too?
Those, so those are built on public parking area?
Okay.
And so those are in the right-of-way as well? And that was one of the big things that we had to work on on the legal side of stuff. Yeah.
So, so in this case, we are building on a parking that's actually owned by the theater owners, Penny and Bob. And so should we be trying to plan the outdoor seating on the public space and retain our takeout spots?
So, one, and the example that we could use in Grand Forks is we're actually working on turning some of Bondser's parking space out back into a parklet as well. And so, one, it's that private property, more the thing that we need to focus on from the city and working with the city on is as far as establishing where liquor can be served, to kind of draw those lines. So, that would be, I think, something for council to look at, at least, is if they want it in the public right-of-way or if they want it in the private bit, and then how liquor gets served as well as if they want to open it up. And I think, I think one of the examples to kind of keep bringing back is that this year being the exceptional, strange year is some of the stuff is at least a pilot and see how it goes. And maybe keeping those public spots out in front of your store to be the pickup locations. I think maybe this year would be good, and then see how it goes. And then if it does work in that sense, and if people like it, then you can kind of start visiting it. But I think keeping your seating in your own private spot makes a little bit more sense for this first year.
I agree. And it makes more sense, and just in terms of the kitchen and staffing and, and access to the people sitting there.
I'm going to go to Mr. Grassel, then I'll go to Mr. Demers after that.
I believe Mr. Demers was first. He can go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Demers. Doesn't matter.
Thanks, Mr. Grassel.
He could be a lot longer than I could.
Can I clarify then on the picture on page three? There's a green area and a yellow, like, parallelogram? Which is going to be the parklet, or with the seating in parklet?
Green.
And what is the yellow?
New curbside.
That'd be the curbside pickup.
Green is seating.
Designated. Okay, so that's, I don't care about that. That's on private property. So, you shouldn't have anything to do with that.
And that's why we've been discussing about just the curbside pickup, but that's why you said Mama Maria's, and they need to talk to them. So, that's why the most discussion is going to be on if we allow that designated pickup on that side street, so.
Yeah, and my views on that are, been pretty clear, and Mr. Gallstead can write his memo. Memo. Thank you.
Mr. Grassel?
So, if, and I knew this was going to be an issue, so, and I was looking at this earlier. So, what if we designated, take the parallelogram and go directly to the north where there's an open spot in the parking lot? There's an open spot, then there's a blue car, if you guys are looking at your picture. And just designate those two spots inside the parking lot. So, it would be kind of kitty corner from their, their outside seating area as pickup. It gets them off the private street, off the street and into the parking lot. Does anybody have an issue with that?
Are you talking two spots by the blue car, or one and?
Yeah, the, the blue car and then, well, it would be to the, those two spots, the open spot and the blue car.
Right.
And we could just sign it, sign them as pickup for, you could have it for, I mean, I don't know. Blue Moose, Boardwalk, Mike's Pizza, that, those in that area. Then we could have those other areas for parking. Be it that, if we have problems with that thing being filled up, then we're doing okay.
That's right.
So, I mean, I, I just think if, if we could allow that two spots, it gets them off the private, private part, or gets them off the street. Gets them, it's still close enough to the three or four areas there. I, I can live with that. I can live with it where it is too, but I just figured an alternative spot.
Yeah, so my, my question on that is, I, because kind of what it's sounding like is making those, these takeout spots for all of the restaurants on that row. Would it make more sense to have a couple extras then, since this is still pretty big takeout time? Or you think two would be enough for all of those places?
Well, I think there's going to be enough parking there right now, the way things are going. But I mean, if, like I said, if over a period of time, I guess like you said earlier, time's going to tell. But at least it gives us two spots to start with.
Yeah. I, I like that idea. I think it also opens up, because that street is kind of where, if you're going to pull up to go eat, that street is where you're looking for number one spots. At least on that parking lot, it's kind of an in-between everything.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, Mark, this is Tim.
Yes, sir.
It's real similar to the, the hubs setup that they have in Grand Forks. They've got the little patio deck to the, in the parking lot, and they can do pickup there too. That's, keeps it off the, off the main grid. I like that idea.
Mr. Gallstead, do you see any issues, especially with us owning that parking lot? That we'd have any issues there, sir?
No issues with that. We just have to make a resolution and pass it. It's off-street parking. It's a private park, or off-street public parking that we own.
Anybody else have any comments or questions on this?
Mr. President, this is Mark Demers.
Was I muted?
No, you're fine, Mr. Gallstead.
No, you were there.
Okay.
Mr. Demers, you have something? Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is for the Downtown Development Director or the Downtown Association.
Yeah.
Do people pay for that reserved parking in Grand Forks?
So, they pay for the permit to do this, the parklets. But they don't actually pay for the parking spots since they are public on-street. And what they've done in the past is the same as the outdoor seating permits for just sidewalks. So, it's $100 at the beginning and then $25 annually.
I think, I guess at a minimum, I would think that we should have, if we're going to designate for people or businesses or whatever, we should have some sort of rent. Otherwise, I believe it's a gift, and that's illegal, I think.
Even if it's for all the businesses downtown in that area? Mayor?
My question was for the Mama Maria's. Would they be content to just cut across that traffic lane to deliver to those cars? Any concern with that, or would that still be pretty smooth for you?
I'm sorry, but I've got a disadvantage. I don't, I don't have the picture that you're looking at with the cars and so on. But if I understand, it's just adjacent, it's just a little further away from the mall than their, our current takeout parking, which would be the parklet. Is that right?
Yep, it would be just across the driveway, and then the first two parking spots on the west edge of that parking lot.
Okay, okay, got it. No, I don't think that would be a problem.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything on this? Is there something, Mr. Gordy, you can work with them and get something written up, so we can?
Yes. It'll either be next week or the meeting after that to do the, and that has to do with pick, the resolution for the pickup, our pickup spots. Nancy's working with them with regard to the location, any permits they need. Since it's on private property, I don't know that they need anything else, but Nancy will let us know on that.
Mr. Driscoll, when did you guys want?
Sorry?
Mr. Driscoll, when did you want this to be going forward? What was your timeline?
Well, a lot of that, well, depends on when the governor allows the outdoor dining. And it, it sounds tonight that he may extend the stay-home orders. So, the, the problem is, we have to invest in building out the space, building the decking and the railing and so on. So, we'd like to have the space ready as soon as possible after the restrictions have lifted. Because we, we, you know, we all know how precious summer evenings are in our town. And we don't want to, you know, lose the opportunity to have diners there at the restaurant either.
I just don't want us to impede your moving forward, you know? I know we have the government, government level in St. Paul putting little breaks on some things. And I just don't want us to be the issue while you can't move forward, so that's why I was asking a timeline.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that consideration.
Mr. Gallstead, do you have something, sir?
Just the last thing that I was going to say is, is, and, and this would be a, a liquor license issue on whether or not that's going to be considered part of the license premises or not. And that's, that's going to be a question for the state. So, Ms. Driscoll may want to contact State of Minnesota to make sure that they're going to allow it. Because it sounds like the city doesn't have a problem with it. I just don't want that to be an issue.
Would this, would this be similar to when Bob was doing these cross-the-hallway separate locations?
It, it certainly could be, yes, because it's now, because it's not in their designated location. It's outside on somebody else's property. And I think it can probably be worked through. I just want to make, I just want somebody to be aware of that could become an issue with the liquor licensing and to make sure that that's worked out.
Mr. Grassel, if I could, those two parking spaces that the mall, or the theater ownership owns, they're actually part of our lease. So, we do have legal rights to be using that space. And I don't, and I know that my, that Kristen Skeving is, is really, has been in touch with the woman who handles all of your liquor licensing issues and so on. So, but yes, we'll check on it further, just to make sure.
Thank you.
Blue, you had something else, sir?
Yeah, more, I was just a question regarding the timeline. Yeah, more, I was just a question regarding the timeline, um, even if this is to go to council not next week, but the next, the week after, the week following, is there any way that, uh, Mama Maria's could start, at least on construction, to kind of be as ready as possible, or is that something that needs to be held back until all the approval process has gone through?
That'd be for?
Just to kind of help you guys as much as possible.
Would that be a question for the permit of doing this, especially just because it's on private property, constructing it, would that be a Nancy question?
Okay.
I'm here, um, based on the size, the fact that it's temporary, it's not permanently attached to anything, um, and that it's probably going to be maybe 36 inches to 48 inches with the railing, we're not looking at a permitting process for it at all, because it's definitely temporary, it's going to be moved in and out, um, my bigger question is, um, Jason and I order signs and, and do everything, striping for the parking lot, uh, do you want us to move forward on getting that started?
I, I, I think we probably need a resolution first, right, for the two spots?
Right.
And then go from there? Am I right, Mark, or not?
That's why I was asking, Mr. Gordy, when you could have this done, which, you know, so.
I will work with, uh, Mr. Galston to make sure we have that resolution.
Tuesday?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else have anything?
Wait, wait until Tuesday before we look at ordering or anything.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Thank you so much, thank you for coming on and speaking to us, hopefully everything goes well and good luck.
Thank you, yes, and I, as a final note, I was just thinking, um, if we have to detach the two issues, you know, the, and just keep the parklet authorization separate from the , uh, takeout, uh, dedicated parking, um, that might be an option that would work for us, because at least then we could start building out the space and figuring that out, but obviously, i- it's hard to make that investment without knowing how we continue getting a stream of income, uh, currently.
I think they're two separate issues anyway, one's on private property and one is, you know, the other consideration is us, so I, I think that was in my mindset already that these are two separate.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else have anything?
This is Nancy, this is Nancy, I'll be in contact with you tomorrow to, um, work through the parklet part, since that is private, so we'll make sure that we get something to you and that we've got that moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to number two, inter-ministerial agreement for Point Bridge inspection, Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, federal requirements regulate or require that all bridges with a span of 20 feet or greater are inspected, um, but the way that it typically would work on the Point Bridge, owned by Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, was that we would inspect, we would have our inspectors inspect per MINDOT's requirements, Grand Forks would have theirs inspected by North Dakota DOT, um, and then reverse North Dakota DOT, however, they're no longer offering that service to Grand Forks and are encouraging border cities to get together and, um, and just do a one, one-time inspection that would meet all the federal requirements, and they were, Grand, the city of Grand Forks came to me asking if we would like to enter into an agreement so that we would inspect it and then split the cost, city of East Grand Forks would be in charge of, um, selecting who would be inspecting it, right now we're using WSN Engineering, um, and their qualified bridge inspector, and so, for instance, this year, we had them inspect, Grand Forks would have then split the cost of that inspection. We got an agreement drafted, um, Mr. Galston and Mr. Murphy had a chance to look at and review it, Mr. Galston had some suggestion on maybe set, to remove something, they did that, Grand Forks is good with it, bringing it forward to their city council, and so I'm bringing it to present before our council here tonight, um, and see if, if you all would like to move forward or not. Is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Stordahl?
Just one, Mark, this is Tim.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the bottom approach there, are they going to do something to maybe level that out if they, after they do the inspection, or is that just to make sure the bridge is fine?
That's just to make sure the bridge is fine, that, that area on our end, are you talking about on the East Grand Forks end?
Yes.
Yeah, that's kind of on a slip line there, and so, we've been just repairing it, overlaying it every few years to, uh, to improve, I guess, improve the road, but I think a long-term, um, more long-term fix would be fairly expensive, the MPOs looked into it, um, a few years back, but, uh, I guess we haven't done that, uh, we haven't done that, so.
Okay.
We just continue to, uh, to kind of put a patch on it as it settles.
Put a little higher patch this time.
We'll try.
Thanks.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Stordahl? I see none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to number three, request to fill public service librarian position, Charlotte, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Uh, we have a library public services position that has taken care of arranging most of our virtual presence since the COVID-19, so right now it has become crucially important, so with the resignation of the person holding that position right now, uh, her position ending May 29th, we will be in a tough spot if we can't fill that position as soon as possible with somebody who is qualified, so I'm asking the board after, asking the council, after the library board has said, let's get this done as quickly as possible, to move forward and advertise for this position.
Anybody have any questions for Miss? I don't see any hands.
Mr. President, this is Mark.
Okay, Mark, all right.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, so what would happen if we didn't fill this position? What would be the workflow that you'd have to figure out?
The workflow would change quite a bit in that there would be some things that we could not accomplish, we could not accomplish some things as quickly, uh, we will have IT come in and help us continue to do our posting and updating as far as putting information out there, but that information has to be organized, people who create it have to be, uh, put together as, as a plan with a schedule, we organize our programs along with our, um, interaction with the public, and all of that is happening online right now.
Can you better define the services that just, you just said, there will be things that we won't be able to do, what are those things, what are those services that we would be cutting?
Well, if you've watched the website or watched Facebook, you have seen that we have regular posts going out, we have, we've started a blog, so we're getting information that is not only how-to, but also what we're doing and how to help people while they're staying at home right now, we are getting information out to our families that can have children involved in a summer reading program, we will be mailing things out, but unless we get their attention through the virtual process, they probably won't even know that the program exists in a lot of cases, we also have reports that are run through our virtual connection with people, so we know who's interacting with what we have available, and so those reports have been maintained by our public service librarian, so that would have to be added to someone who right now might be doing a creative process, such as our program coordinator, I would hate to see baby bounce not show up one week, because we have somebody tallying up numbers to find out who we have to send a, uh, specific message to through our newsletter, which is also completely created by the public service librarian, so though creative materials might be gathered from someone, this position is the one that organizes it and gets it accessible to the public.
Thank you, do you know, do you have any statistics of what kind of traffic you guys are generating now as compared to before, pre-March?
We have some stats, that, in fact, the state library has changed our annual report already, because they know that our numbers are going to be gathered in a different format, and what we are finding is that our e-materials are going up as far as circulation, so e-books and e-audio are both being going, are both increasing, we're also finding that our teenagers have found that renewing or getting a new library card is something that's valuable in this time when they're staying at home, which is an uptick from the regular library numbers for teens, which is super great, we've also had a lot of children who normally get temporary cards in the summer, so they last three months, are now, the families are asking that we give them a year-long card so that they can access the materials that we have, and then they've enrolled in summer readings, so I can't, I, I can give you specific numbers if I, you know, go back and pull them out, I can send them to you, but I do know, I week, I meet weekly with the library leaders in the state of Minnesota, and the reports are that teens are so much more involved now in libraries and in reading because of the public access through the virtual connection, we, we don't want to back that down, that's really important, um, but I, but I can certainly get those numbers for you.
I would appreciate it, um, and I guess I'll just give my two cents, I looked at this position and with a median salary over $70,000, requiring a master's I think is a bit much for what kind of services those things require, I would say pretty much any college graduate that's 25 years old can do social media, um, can do those type of things, I think we should back down the, back down what we're, um, asking for, um, and I, and I am saying this now with this one, but I mean, I think we're going to be facing some big, big cuts here going forward, um, from the state, uh, I, I would vote not to fill this position, but if we could fill it with someone that was in the $40,000 range, I think that would be more, uh, more appropriate.
The other piece of this job, when the building opens up, and if all things go perfectly well, we'll start our front door pickup soon, is that the position supervises the front desk and the interaction with the public, so we are talking about supervising and training not only front desk, but volunteers, and this is in how to work with other people, how to keep programs going, I completely understand the concern with the budget right now, half of her job is working with people, especially when we're open, and that's been translated to the virtual world right now, um, if, when, as we slowly open up, this position would be one that would have to have a foot in both worlds and be able to coordinate it, which when you talk about any college graduate, yes, they can get onto a screen and they can take an app or, uh, some software and work that program, but they may not understand why we're doing it, how to reach the people, how best to reach them, how to reach all kinds of people, not just those who easily access a computer app, so I, I understand the budget concern, I'm, I'm very aware of the, the, all the dollars spent, yeah, within any program, but with the potential that our programming monies might be decreased because some of it comes through the state, um, legacy funds and our, um, council, we are going to have to do more in-house, that means we need the trained people in-house to be able to maintain the quality of the work we do.
Anything else, Mr. DeMers?
I have a question, Mr. President, this is Dale.
Hang on a second, Dale, Dale, just hang on a second, Mr. DeMers, are you down?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Mr. Alms, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Charlotte, this position isn't one that you just created, this has been there for a while, hasn't it?
This position has been filled, uh, three years as of last Friday.
Yeah, so it's, it's one that's, it's, it's been very valuable in the library, um, the other thing I think that, you're, you're one of the few department heads that has kept your budget under control pretty well, and, uh, I think, uh, I, I really think this is something that they need to keep providing the service, they've been working really hard to get this library, uh, the clientele and stuff built up and, and figuring out ways to get to people, and, and, uh, this is part of it, uh, I, I think we should keep it, I recommend it, we, we, go ahead and, uh, let her advertise for it.
Anybody else have any comments at this time?
I have one question, Mr. President, um, Charlotte, including yourself, and if we fill this position, um, how many librarian-degreed individuals will there be on our staff? I know we had a philosophical shift some years ago, and we moved some hours away from a part-time scenario into more professional librarian folks with the idea that that expertise was really needed, and this would represent a shift away from that move which we made a few years ago, so how many librarian-trained degreed staff will you have if you fill this, including yourself, and I guess generally, how has it gone, that philosophical shift toward more people with the degree versus, um, folks, good people, but just folks that are able to help out behind the scenes or in other ways?
That was an amazingly fantastic idea when we started doing that, uh, when I started over a couple decades ago, the degree had a different impact on public libraries, there were a lot of teachers that could come in and run the smaller public libraries, but as our communities have changed and our libraries have become more technical, the education has become vital, I will be honest and say, when I started in the library field, I could do everything that any library employee could do, at this point, I cannot, I can manage them, but I need the educated staff to be able to do everything that a public library is capable of doing.
So, if we fill this position, including yourself, how many librarian-trained folks, total number?
We have four full-time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anybody else have anything at this time? I think we need to move forward and make sure we take care of the library. I see nothing else, moving on, thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Uh, move on to number four, city attorney-retainer agreement, Mr. Murphy.
Uh, thank you, Council President, um, so, yeah, we'll go on to the next big spender here, I'm just kidding, prior you're on, um, no, we're, we're looking at, uh, the city attorney's contract expired, uh, December 31st of 2019, um, we have been discussing this with our city attorney for an extension, uh, what we put together is a three-year ex, extension, um, which would be at a per-hour rate, um, uh, for the, um, services that they do, um, as far as- services that they do as far as criminal prosecution and civil services. The fee for 2020 is at $125 an hour, which is what it is currently, and what it was last year as well. 2021 and 2022 would go to $135. So I guess I will take any questions.
Do they have any questions for Mr. Murphy? Exert. Move on to number five, discussion on seasonal pay scale. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. This is something that we look at, we end up having to look at quite often. It seems like almost every year. So what we're looking at, the, the new minimum wage here for ten, is, for the state of Minnesota is $10 per hour. So we have to adjust the seasonal pay scale for that. So the way it works is the seasonal pay scale is different than the city's more, regular pay scale that governs our full-time and part-time. This one just, just covers the seasonals. And so we're, and it has nine grades in it. So step one on grade one is where is the minimum wage. So that currently starts at $10 per hour, and then it goes up at 2% after that for the step increase, and the step between the grades is 5.5%. So what we're looking at is we're going to need to adopt the new seasonal pay scale, which would be retroactive to January 1st. And what I'm also asking for is the authority from the council for when the, the state and federal minimum wage, when that does change and does increase, that we are able to adjust this pay scale without having to bring it to the, to the city council for approval. We'd be doing that just to stay current. Any changes other than those that would be required due to the, the minimum wage change would still have to come to the council. But what I'm asking for is if it's just due to the, the minimum wage changing, that we'd be able to adjust that and react to that in a little bit of a quicker manner. So that is my report, and I will take any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Murphy? I see none.
Mr. Murphy, this is Mark Demers.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you, for the next meeting, provide like a, positions for those grades so we can match those with?
Oh, sure.
Not the personnel, but what positions function at each of those grades, please?
Yes, we have that. I can, I'll include that in the packet.
Thank you.
And if I may?
Phil Sted.
Mr. Murphy had me look into this as well, on whether or not having a resolution that just automatically increased the minimum wage, if that was legal. In my opinion, it is because it's a, it, one, is a mandatory, as long as it's mandatory. And I believe that that's what he's designating it for. If it's a mandatory minimum wage required increase, then we could do it this way so that we're not having to revisit it each and every time that there is a mandatory increase.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything at this time? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Move on to number six, potential COVID budget impact discussions. I had Mr. Murphy put this on the agenda for a couple of reasons. One, to have us as a council and the citizens understand where we're at with our reserves, where we stand financially, and what we potentially may look at as impacts down the road, maybe LGA, maybe as indicated in the packet, could be property tax payments, whatever it may be. But I wanted to have discussion. I know Mr. Reeple brought it up last week also, but we talked about earlier last week on this, and wanted to make sure that we had discussion, make sure we're, people in this town, city, understand that we're looking at this and taking a proactive approach to understanding what impacts this might have on the city as a whole, and what we are going to do and what we plan on looking at and taking some steps down the road as we look at our budget for the next year. So, Mr. Murphy, if you want to, and I don't know if Carla's on with us also, so.
Yeah, Carla did say she was going to be calling in and joining us and be, to be available, but I guess I will start with this. The one thing I want to preface this discussion with is, you know, I understand this, and I think this is a great exercise to go through, but I would like to try to maybe alleviate some of the potential crisis feel to it. I know at the beginning of the year, the state of Minnesota was potentially looking at a budget surplus in here, and now we are in May, and we're looking at a $2.4 billion deficit. And I just want to preface this by saying, I do understand that, and I, I do think that this particular budget deficit projection is going to be fairly short-lived, just due to the fact that this is a forced shutdown of the economy. Once we are able to go back to business as normal, I, I don't really know what the full restaurant and, and shopping demand will go up to, but I have to think that it's going, there's some pent-up demand for that, and that it may not go to the, to the reset down levels, but I definitely think it's going to recover to a, a large amount. So I do think the, in my opinion, the, the $2.4 billion deficit is an absolute worst-case scenario. I def, in my opinion, I would think, once the economy gets going again, we're going to be much less than that, if not even maybe back to the, to the positive. So, but with that being said, again, I think this is a great exercise to go through, and I, I wholeheartedly endorse it. But the one thing that we want to bring up is, is any action that, or any revenue shortfall that we may have is still unknown at this time, and the impact of it is still unknown. And it's, it's still a ways out there. Because you have to remember, we are due to get our property tax payment from the county. We typically get that in July. And that, in what is looking at being put forward there is that the non-escrowed ones would be able to do a delay, it was a 60-day delay payment with no interest, which just means that, that the property taxes, if they are paid late with no interest, we would just be getting them at a later time. We do have the, our reserve fund, which is this type of situation, is exactly what the reserves are for, is if LGA is delayed or property taxes are delayed, that we do have the cash on hand, and that we do not have to take some of the actions that the League of Minnesota Cities and the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities put forward as far as, you know, like, revenue anticipation bonds and those type of things. So in the, in the short term, I think we're in very good shape, and we don't have to look at any of those type of items for, for quite a while. For me, the big unknown will be what happens with the state, the LGA, the state aid, and where we come in with that. We have not heard anything that we will not be getting, or any indication that we will not be getting the state aid anticipated, projected to give, for us to get this year. So with that being said, you know, I don't anticipate any changes in, in the 2020 budget year. However, the 2021, as we get into that budgeting process and as we hear more, we could, we take, take a closer look at. So with that being said, the, if we are going to start looking at how we're going to handle it if our revenues are decreased, particularly with an LGA cut, which I said I see is probably the most likely scenario, or the one that we probably have to deal with first, what I would be looking for is we would need to, as a group, prioritize what aspects of what we provide are the most vital and rank those. And you have to make adjustments and cuts based on that. The one thing I will say is, across-the-board cuts, I know they sound good, and they make good soundbites, but however, in practice, they're very difficult to, to actually do it and maintain in the real world, just because you, you, most departments, you can't just do like a 10% or 15% cut and change, you know, how many paper clips you buy, or how many supplies you buy. It's going to be cutting staff, and you say a 10% or 15% cut, usually that, that won't mean like one staff or whatever. So, again, if we're looking at this, I think what we need to do is to prioritize the services that we provide, and then work backwards from there. So that is my little spiel. Carla, I don't know if you are on, if you want to add anything to that other, and if not, I guess I'll take questions, and we can begin the discussion.
Mr. Murphy, I have one thing. Can you, I just want everybody to know where we're at for reserves, what we've done diligently for the last few years, getting it back to where we needed to have it at, and what the state requires. Maybe touch base on that, just so that everybody knows who's, you know, listening, and so they have understanding that we are in a good position now, and we don't know what is going to happen, but we need to have these discussions of possibilities. But I want everybody to know that we are making sure that we're taking care of what we need to take care of, so.
Yeah, I can, I can touch on that.
Sure, but I am on the line too.
Okay, good. I was going to say, because Carla is, she's, I can probably do an adequate job of, of explaining the reserves and where we're at, but Carla is, is more into the day-to-day of it, and probably would do a little bit better job. So I'll turn it over to Carla if you, if you are available.
Yes, I am here, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I did explain in the packet where we ended the 2018 year, and that our fund balance was at, our unassigned fund balance was at 58% of expenditures, 54% of revenue. Our anticipated 2019 audit number would be around $500,000, which would bring our fund balance to over $6.5 million, or close to that. And our unassigned fund balance would be 56% of expenditures, or 57% of revenue. And the state recommendation is 35% to 50%. So we are above that amount. I did also state in the document that we collect about $2.3 million in LGA, local government aid payment. We get it in two payments. We get it in July and the second half in December, and that this is about 25%, 24% of our 2020 total budget of revenues. So if you look at our fund balance, which would be at about $6.5, the 2.3 would still give us a fund balance of over $4 million, which would actually still be sufficient to run our operations for, you know, they talk about months, so, so through, for, you know, five months. And then we would still have property taxes coming in because they are delayed, they are not forgiven. So at this time, we are in good shape, like David stated well. And, you know, if something would change, we would look at it again. We can look at these things when we start our budgeting process for 2021. And if there's questions on that, I'm here to answer, so if David.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just add one, one more comment to that. As the Finance Director, Ms. Anderson, stated, you know, is that the, in 2018, general fund balance increased that $588,000, and we are looking at increase, anticipate that we will increase in 2019, once we do the audit. And as you guys remember in the budget process, part of that was, now that we are actually at and even slightly above what the recommendation is, is remember last year, we looked at utilizing some of that money, that 500 and some thousand, to offset what we were needing to do for property tax, for property taxes as far as the, the increase for the next year. And the result, the reason that we are getting at these 588, except for 2018, and an estimated 500,000 for 19, is due to the fact that I do take a lot of pride in our department heads in the fact that they consistently, the majority of them, in, come in spending less than what was budgeted for that, that particular year. And we have said, we typically estimate our revenues on a conservative, on the conservative side. So that does, that's where we get that extra funding from, that is that, is our department heads do consistently underspend what they budget for, for the year. And I am very proud of them on that. So again, in, when we're doing the budget process here for 2021, depending on what happens with all this, you know, if our revenues come in and the state is made whole again, and, and we're doing this like a normal year, again, we'd be looking at what, that, the additional funds that we have available, do we use that as a carryover for not doing a property tax increase, or at least as small of a proximity tax increase as we can, or do we put it towards other items like capital improvements, like face-making equipment, those type of things? So that's what I wanted to, otherwise I'll, we'll take any questions.
Anybody else have anything to add on discussion?
Mark.
Mayor.
One thing.
Yes, sir.
I think the question on all of our minds right now is, is there anything we should do between now and the end of this year, say in the near term, in the next one, two, three months? Are there any cost-saving measures we should put in, in the near term, to try to hedge against what might be coming in the future? And I know we're solid on reserves, and I would anticipate that, as you say, the revenues for this year should be great. The question is going to be what the legislature might do with LGA in the following year, and there's even a remote possibility that they would either put off, or suspend, or eliminate part of that LGA payment. I think it's happened before, quite a long time ago, there was a shortfall, and, and so the state did some funny things with LGA. So I think the question on all of our minds is, in the near term, in the next several months, is there anything we should do to try to conserve that would create a better environment for us to finish out this year and even set us up well for next year? My gut says we should probably just stay the course and not do anything radical this year, but really with an eye toward next year and what could happen, which we don't know. What will the legislature do with LGA in the year 2021? That's what we're going to have to wait and see. And so I feel like the recommendation you've given, Mr. Murphy, is a good one, and that is, we have good reserves, let's not do anything too foolish right now, too radical to finish out this year, but really with ear to the rail of what the legislature is up to, particularly starting in 2021.
Well, I think I can, I can answer that. I think, and part of it is going to, is, is going to sort itself out, just due to the fact that with the, the COVID-19 shutdowns and the, the things that we are having to do is going to, it's going to reduce our revenue to a certain degree, but it's also going to reduce our expenses. The one I'm thinking of in particular is the Parks Department. Unfortunately, the, like, some of the sporting seasons, if those are not going to be happening, or if they're going to be shut down for the summer, typically, we, at best, we break even on those with the seasonal help that we have to hire versus what we get for revenues and those type of things. So we wouldn't be getting the revenue in, but we're also not expending the, the resources for the seasonals and, and those type of things. And this isn't a really nice thing to say, but what could, what would really change our perspective is if the, what happens with the pool. Granted, I, I love the pool, and, and everybody does, and my kids use it, we love it. However, if we're just looking at the hard numbers of it, if we are not able to do a pool season this year, or if the social distancing regulations change how we, how we're able to open the pool, that, that could be a big one, because granted, we lose money on the pool every year, as far as the operation costs versus what we receive in it. So that one could, could make a change. So I guess, to answer the mayor's question, I think some of the ones, some of our expenses, if we're not able to do those, do those items, we, we won't be getting revenue, but we also won't be going out in, in the expense. We're not hiring any of those individuals without knowing that, that season is going to happen. So everything is on a hold that, that, right now. By the way, some of the other ones, you know, you know, the capital, capital portion, that's, that's a separate fund other than our, our general fund. A lot of the things that we need, that we are, for the summer, you know, are, you have to do anyway. I mean, we, we have to mow the grass. We have to maintain the, the parks. We have to have the bathrooms and those kind of things open, if, you know, if we're allowed to. to. And so, the public works. Yeah. So, those are the ones that come to, come to mind, but if we have any, any suggestions, I certainly will, will take them. But for the most part, there's, there's still, as far as, other than like the, those, the sports and those type of things, and the summer programs, the rest, we, we have to really do whether we're shut down or not, like meaning like the grasses, parks, those kind of things.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I, I appreciate the optimism as far as what the, the budget and the economy is going to do. I, in many ways, share it. I think, you know, there's one thing that the American economy is, is resilient and adaptive, and I think we'll figure out ways to make profits and, and make businesses work. I think where I'm, I differ, I think that, that, that horizon, that time horizon is going to be a little bit more pushed out. I think that the state is going to be in a bit of trouble this year. I think that if the, the, the projection that was put out with a $2 billion deficit was still using fairly old numbers, I think we're still looking at high unemployment numbers, and, and really just, even the cost of changing business models is going to be, is, is going to be a pretty big shock to the folks. And I hope it, it responds back faster, but I, I just think we should take as conservative an approach as we can. Like I said, have we had any response? Do we know, has the LGA fix been dealt with at all? I know we're facing a $100,000 cut this year on our LGA. I haven't heard anything. I know the, the other tax issues are, are kind of on the sidelines now, but do we know anything about our LGA fix?
No, we haven't. I have not heard anything on it. I know they, they've been focused on other things, and I know they, they need to be, they're supposed to be done on Monday. This coming Monday is when they're supposed to be done with the legislature. So, yeah, the answer is no. And I have not heard if, we've heard anything more about the, I have not heard anything more about whether they were going to extend that fix to hold us in place. So, at, at this point, no, I have not heard.
Okay. Wondering from Carla, what, what kind of accelerator are you using for the 2021 budget for wages benefits?
We are, we haven't gotten to that point yet, and as David can tell you, we are, I believe, in negotiation this year. So, right now, we don't have any percentage in for a sta, all we have is our step matrix. We don't have a cost of living, but in any time, because there isn't one at this time. And David could probably answer to that also. So, we haven't built that into the 2021 budget.
I guess, Mike, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, because it's, this is the final year of our contracts with all of our unions, so we'll be negotiating those. Yes, and I do not like to put a placeholder in there until we've done that.
I guess the reason I'm wondering is, you gave reserve projections, but we know that there's probably anywhere from a 5% to 10% bump for wages and salaries, correct? That's historically what it's been?
Yeah, yeah, historically, that's, that's correct. You're, you're correct, you're right on that.
Okay. Does that, how does that factor into that reserve?
How does that?
I mean, so was the reserve, when you gave our reserve projection, that we're going to be well above it, does that factor in a 10% or a 5% adjustment for, for wages and benefits?
No, because it's coming in from the previous year. So, the, for example, that half, let's just call it the half a million, coming in from, let's say, projected from, from 2019, coming into, into 20. So, we would, so that's money that, yeah, that has not been accounted for in that aspect of it. So, no, we would need to determine what we would do with this. So, so I, I think I'm getting your question, getting your questions. That is outside of, of any projected, projected increase. We could use it for a potential salary increase, for adjusting the salaries in the future, but it, it has not been accounted for in this, in our 20 budget, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just curiosity, David, during this last couple of months, have we furloughed any of our employees?
We have not.
So, senior citizens, center, even though they're not open, they're still on the payroll. The library, even though that they're not open, and yet that they're doing a lot of online stuff, I would think they could do that with less employees. But we haven't laid anyone off yet?
We have not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Could Charlotte speak?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
We have, we do have full-time, four full-time people, but we have seven part-time people that we keep year-round, and they normally average between 20 and 25 hours a week, and they have been down to about 10 hours a week. So our hours have changed for employees.
Okay, yeah, if I may, I could, I could answer that a little bit. Yes. So, with our, we have, is when I say furloughed anybody, we have not furloughed or laid off any full-time people. However, our part-time people, that does get reviewed on, on a case-by-case basis, and there are positions that we have not filled that are part-time. Seasonals are a whole nother story, too. We're going to be looking, you know, as far as what our seasonal need is going to be this, this summer, because that's quite a ways off. The, the one thing I want to say is, is just because if we furlough them, or lay them off, it's, it's, it's really, in, in broad terms, it's really not a real cost savings to furlough them, because we do have to pay unemployment and insurance, those type of things. So, in those, it turns into a much longer term deal. It's really not a, a cost savings in the short term to furlough them or lay them off. But however, the, the part-times and the ones that we, that we, the seasonals, that, that definitely is a case, and we are, as I said, looking at that, and there are part-timers that we have not hired, just due to this.
Anybody else have anything else at this time? I see none.
I have.
Mayor, you have something, sir?
One item outside of that item.
I, I don't know if we can do that.
All right. I received an email and a proclamation in the last week or so. One of the most moving events that I participate in each year is Peace Officers Memorial Day, and it's an opportunity to recognize and honor fallen officers. It's attended very, very well. It's usually held over in Grand Forks, and it's for both cities, but also cities in the nearby area for local police. County sheriffs from multiple counties are represented, state troopers are there, even some Royal Canadian Mounted Police are there. And again, the purpose of it is to honor fallen officers, and they call for end of tour for each of the officers who have died serving these jurisdictions, all the way back to the start of our history. And again, it's, it's one of the most moving things that I'm part of, and it's well-deserved and, and very, very important when we consider the sacrifice that they've made. Well, this year, that event is not going to be held at its usual time, which is on the 15th of May, because of the COVID situation. And so it will be moved out into the latter part of summer, or maybe into fall. But I would like, because it's falling right now in this week, if I may, to read the proclamation that would be read for that event. And so I have here the proclamation, National Police Week, May 10th to the 16th, 2020. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas, the members of the East Grand Forks Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all citizens in the city of East Grand Forks, and whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the East Grand Forks Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen Gander, Mayor of the City of East Grand Forks, to hereby proclaim the week of May 6, excuse me, 10th through 16, 2020, as National Police Week, and encourage everyone to observe National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which everyone may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens dated this May 12th, 2020. Stephen Gander, Mayor, City of East Grand Forks. So if you have the opportunity, thank a police officer this week, and also keep in your prayers the families of those who've lost loved ones in the service to our communities in this whole region, you know, through law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for reading that proclamation. I appreciate it. And yes, make sure you do thank the officers and remember the families. So, thank you again. Anybody else have anything before I ask for an adjournment? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
By Riepel. Second by Holmes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Polls, same sign.
Aye.
Motion is carried, means adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.